I've dealt with anxiety my whole life. They both like, girl be quiet. Uh oh. Is anybody's fries hot? Someone was having fun in here. I don't complain about my food. So listen, my nail finally came off. Probably don't need to bat that up. Hey y'all, so we're back, hold on. It looked like y'all were cricket, but you weren't. So we are back to another week of vlogging. I was not here last week with the vlogging thing because I was trying to get my life together, like get health insurance, just in general getting my life together also. I worked on a better setup for myself because it felt very cluttered. I don't like clutter. I found this really nice table at Marshall's and it folds up into like this tiny table. And if I need to slide my desk back, it'll slide under the desk and then the desk can be against the wall. So really was excited about that. I also got a second screen. So now I have three monitors essentially. So I can like edit on one, have YouTube on one, have my email on one. And then this is just a screen full of sticky notes, things that I need to do, ideas for videos, things like that. But we're about to get back into vlogging. I, listen, I was so out of like, because I'm not working, like actually going to a job. I didn't keep the weeks together. I showed up to the girl who does our hair, um, to her house Wednesday with my daughter to get her hair done. It's next week. And then I'm going out of town too. I was like, I am so glad that I looked at my calendar. Cause if I had drove to go out of town and they'd be like, oh ma'am, that's next week, that would have been a horrible thing. So I was like a week ahead of time. Today is Saturday, the 12th, October the 12th. So you're seeing this at the beginning of the video. So I can explain this video. Cause you're gonna see two working sessions and we'll jump into just like regular life. But I haven't really picked up the camera and it's Saturday. I post on Tuesday, so I don't know how much content is gonna be in here. But I'm still sharing it. Like I said, last week, y'all wouldn't want to see that. Like I sat on the phone getting insurance. What else did I do? I just got a lot of stuff set up. I'd got my bills set up the way that I wanted those set up. It was just a lot of life stuff and girl, it was boring. It was boring for me, so I know it would have been boring for y'all. Also, my anxiety has been messing with me a little bit. And not even about like life or like me being worried about anything. Sometimes I have health anxiety and I have death anxiety. And so if I'm, if I am, if something is on my mind, I go to worst case scenario, right? And then it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what's actually on my mind. Whichever anxiety wants to pop out, that's what's gonna pop out. And what popped out last week was sickness and death anxiety. It was like, girl, there's nothing wrong with you. But we pushed through it, we pushed through it. I have done counseling before for it. I also, you know, have better help. Um, I didn't feel like I was feeling like talking to anybody, so I just didn't. I was like, I can, I can push through this on my own and I did. And so we're back and we're good now. We love that for me. I've dealt with anxiety my whole life. I can remember it from when I was a child. Like I had dealt with it my whole life. But you know, in my older years is when I realized what it was and was like, um, we need to figure this out. But this morning, it is, it was six, well, actually I've been up since five something. My daughter's TV was very loud when she fell asleep last night. And it woke me up this morning. My son was still up, so I was like, could you please turn her TV off? He turned it off, I still couldn't go back to sleep. So now it's 6:41. I was like, well, I'll get up and get some work done. And I was like, true story, I could get up and do some vlogging. So that is what I did. Today, Saturday, what do I have to do? My video for my other channel is ready to go. It was a sponsored video and I was waiting for the sponsor to approve it. So that's ready to go. Don't have to record a garden video today. But I do have some garden content that I need to do some for Instagram. And then I have some UGC content that I need to do. So I'm gonna do that today because yesterday I didn't really work. When I initially woke up and was like, I can't work in this clutter. I was like, okay, my sister ended up coming over. So I was like, okay, I wanna go to Marshall's. So she took me to Marshall's. Left Marshall's, came back, got it set up. I was like, oh, this is nice. And I could get another monitor. A friend was selling a monitor, went and purchased the monitor. Got back home, put the monitor up, realized, oh my goodness, I need something like a docking station and an extender, whatever. Went back to Best Buy, got that and now I love my setup. I really do love it. Um, it feels more like, uh, you know, office setup. Now I am not a fancy person and I don't have an extra room for office or extra space for office. So it's set up in my living room, but I feel like it's neatly set up in my living room. And so, and that's what I wanted. I was like, if this is gonna be in my living room, I would like it to be neat. There are a bunch of cords. I need to figure out the cord situation. I'll show you the cord. The other thing I need to do today is, so if you are not new here, you know, months ago, we redid my daughter's bedroom, but we never actually finished. So like the curtains aren't, uh, but we need to finish that. And I told her last night, I said, clean your room because we were about to finish doing it. And then I can show you all her room because it'll be finished. So it'll be a long overdue, uh, reveal of her bedroom. Because life was life and so we never actually finished her bedroom. I think that's probably it. So let's get into this vlog. And why now? It's Monday, September the 30th and I'm on my way to a working session. We're going to Starbucks, but we were talking yesterday. And so Starbucks is gonna be our first working session. But we are going to, uh, start trying different coffee shops. So I think that it would, that would be cute. And not trying because some of them I've already been to. Cause I love a good coffee shop, y'all. I love coffee in general. So I, I know a few of them. So we're gonna start you going to other coffee shops. But this is our first official working session. It's no real plan around it. Like we don't have like set times, we're gonna be here and stay here. It'll just be, you know, until everybody feels like they're in a good place for the week. And then we will go and execute the things that we say. I'm late, I'm getting late. So, huh, supposed to be there by nine. I'm probably about 20 minutes away. It's 8:54. I'm late because I didn't realize I needed gas. I feel like I was just kinda chilling this morning. Like I got up well with enough time to get there on time, y'all. But I did not leave the house. And then when I got in the car, I realized, oh my goodness, you need gas. So I'm on my way now. After that, I need to go check my post office box because I rarely do that. And I think about it and then I'm like, eh, I'll do it tomorrow. I also need to find a microphone so that when I am doing voiceovers, which I don't do a lot, but when I do, I want it to sound decent because like my voiceovers be sounding trash. It ain't not real voiceover. It's really just like thanking a sponsor for sponsoring a video or something like that. But it, it sounds not good. So I'm gonna go look for a microphone too. I've been holding the camera the whole time because I don't want it to fall. Anyway, um, I got my other camera back. I don't know if I told y'all, my other camera, the lens stopped coming out. So I took it to Best Buy, the Geek Squad, because I have the total care or whatever you call it, where it covers all of your devices. And at this point, well, all of the devices I have that came from, um, Best Buy, yeah, I want it to be fixed and I don't wanna have to pay for it. Well, nah, I already paid for it, but you know. Anyway, so that's what we doing and I'ma see y'all in a little bit. Y'all, it is so cold in here. I don't like, they both like, girl be quiet. It's freezing. I went to the bathroom, I washed my hands and now I'm freezing because the water didn't get hot. It was cold water and now I'm freezing. I'm serious. I'm coming in here with a whole jacket on the next time, like and a sweatshirt. Cause it's cold. Call it what you want to babe, I'm gonna be warm. It's freezing in here. We are getting a lot of work done. I feel like everybody's making progress. We love that for us. And look, see? What are you working on? A welcome package.
Yes, that has all of the things, um, pricing, PR, all of it. It's a lot, but we getting done.
I shout for the link below to, uh, to her new business venture. Um, so if you are interested, make sure you click. What are you getting done, sir?
Building a flow chart.
Have you gotten a lot of your flow chart done?
It's flowing.
It is flowing. This flow chart is flowing. So everybody's getting stuff done. I just had to come and tell y'all, it's freezing in here. Like I'm gone. I'm about to leave because I'm cold.
We just in a work session.
And we're in a cold work session.
No we're not.
Yes, we are. Alright y'all. So we had a very successful session. And now we're all going to pile up into my car and we're going to go to Best Buy, Target. We need food, so we're gonna go find something to eat. Um, and then that's what we're gonna do. It's very gloomy today, very cold.
Oh my God.
It's 74 degrees, y'all. This cold. Where we getting food from? Are we gonna sit down or we just gonna grab something?
And Freeman?
Uh oh. So you, just so I, I'm sure that I didn't see it. Y'all don't have like a mushroom Swiss burger. Let's do that. I would like to change it to just a burger though.
Want to add bacon? Of course you can.
Thank you.
Can I get the Berea quesadilla?
Thank you. I'm hungry though. I am hungry to eat. Okay, so we started out as a, as a best matchup, right? So we do a Best Buy, we do a Target and then we do a Costco.
Can we add Kroger to that list?
And Kroger, we, we're adding Kroger. Thank you. Uh, no, I'm, you want some sister?
Yes.
It looks good, y'all, hold on.
I was thinking about getting a garlic.
Did you get garlic oil?
No, I got Chipotle something.
Chipotle something? Oh, you got garlic oil. Okay, so he got quesadilla, Berea quesadillas. She got a hangover burger. And then I got something because I wanted mushrooms and bacon. And that just normally come with lamb, but I got it with a burger, um, with beef, so. Ooh, that bun is very soft.
For you.
Yeah. Is anybody's, um, fries hot?
Like hot? Like it's key like the fryer?
That yours is? I must've got the old ones.
Yours not hot?
No. Cause yours is sad.
Uh.
Oh yeah, no, mine not.
How's the sauce man?
It's good, I like it, thank you.
And you enjoy your sauce man?
Mm-hmm.
And you too? And the taco, the quesadillas.
Oh yeah, you know what, like I said, simmer the brisket for hours, low and slow. That same exact liquid, it's so good.
There you go, yes, thank you.
Awesome. I'm surprised you didn't ask for some hot fries. Those don't even look hot though.
They not. It's like, how did I get to play without hot fries? This always happens to me.
What?
It does, it always happens to me.
Nice, eat the hot fries.
That's delicious. Oh yeah, you going back sleeping.
I'm eating fries side. She didn't complain about her food at all because I was fried. Wow.
I don't complain about my food. Okay, let's just be clear here. My food is not correct. I mentioned that it's not correct. My fries are cold. Their fries aren't cold. I didn't complain though. At the end of the day, I probably wasn't gonna eat all of them anyway. So, nah. While you bringing up me complaining about my food.
And I will say, everybody messes up your food.
That's all I'm saying.
I don't even know how it happens. Like we could all go to McDonald's. Me and them, me, we'll order our food. We'll order our food all in the same order. Her food jacked up. They gonna add something to her thing that ain't we need order. It's gonna be hers.
I wonder why.
Why? Why?
I don't know. Do y'all order stuff, do y'all?
Like, just like now. How do we get hot fries and she didn't?
Cause she made a lot of stuff.
She didn't make the stuff.
Well.
Oh, you did.
It's crazy. If you allow substitutions, you allow substitutions. They was like, oh, you substituting all of this? Well, you ain't getting no hot fries baby.
Yeah, she had to find her.
Yeah, it's tough, but you're my sister. It don't matter. I'm always, my, my meal is always gonna have a problem with it.
You substitute everywhere though.
Do I substitute or I take stuff off?
You take both.
I want this, but I don't want onions. I want a little bit of this, no top half bun. Let me use the bacon. Add cheese, but not too much cheese, mushrooms. And then I want it served with silver pepper.
Oh. I want to eat my food the way I want to eat my food. If I am paying for it, I wanna eat it the way I wanna eat it. And if you allow substitutions, then I shouldn't have a problem doing substitutions.
It doesn't even need substitutions though, like. When she ordered wings. Fries are hard, I don't wanna see no veins.
I don't wanna see a vein in my chicken, I can't eat it. Who else can eat chicken with veins? Cause I can't. It's nasty and I won't eat no more than chicken if I see it.
You gotta be fried hard.
Yeah, fried hard, flat, no vein, please.
I, I do want all flats, don't give me no drama.
Oh, everybody is okay if somebody else wants something. That is a substitution because they don't come with all flats. It comes with the wing.
No, there's a lot of people that just do all flats.
Well, that's that, because I need to go.
America's best.
I don't like their wings.
Okay.
My battery going dead. Uh oh, what are you doing? What are you doing?
I did it now.
Okay, we've made it to the Best Buy, our first stop. I need the, the, what you calling for the ring? What you call those things? The, uh, sensors for the ring? And then I'm looking for a microphone. But, let me see here. I don't think they got the sensors for the ring. It's really crazy. I can't find them anywhere. I might have to order them offline. Off to the microphones we go. I don't know where they would be. Do y'all see microphones? Oh, they're over here. I just wanna find my stuff easy and get out of this store. I'm tough, y'all. The guy said that I need some help, I do. This, I think this is it. Where is it? Oh, it's $179, because why? I think this, oh, it's $59, y'all. I will try this one first. A gaming mic. Does it work on? Yeah, I need some help. I mean, like why is it? It's a logic test. Can I use it with top?
Yeah.
There's both of those. There's no sound.
There's some, there's some.
They don't, uh oh.
Why would you put this up here?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Now you changing, we just getting to the good part.
Oh, what did I do?
Were we getting to the good part? We can't hear it. I mean, I guess a nano would work though, right?
What's it doing? What's that light mean?
So it's gonna play over here. It doesn't have to be super fancy for me.
Omni patterns for the different directions, blue software effects.
What does that mean?
Yeah, we can get you some headphones, put the little mic thing on it.
Your back feels good. We like little old people out here today, y'all. Like we're in the whole entire world. We are in Costco. He was looking for a gaming chair while we're doing all of this extras. Well, not a gaming chair, but a chair, comfortable chair.
How you put your back? Push the back.
Oh, the thing down here.
See? It actually feels comfortable.
I'm gonna just go to sleep.
That part. It's very comfortable.
Right here.
Right here.
In this chair.
And this is why you don't eat before you do what you supposed to be doing. Okay, I'm gonna go see if I can find a drone while you make that decision. Mac mini?
What are we doing with this stuff?
It's a computer. You plug it up into a monitor.
Oh, into a monitor.
This is their version of like a desktop.
Oh.
I like how y'all do this.
That's nice. Oh, this the DGI one.
It's a bundle though.
How much was it though? Oh. It was, it was $749, y'all. I didn't find what I was looking for, so now I'm just here with them. But I will go look for some samples. Bundles? They have bundles at Kroger?
No, usually I have.
What are you looking for? The Clorox one?
Yeah, but they had the synthetic ones.
Oh, well, we have made it to Target. I don't have anything that I'm getting. They're getting stuff out of here and they actually have lists. So I'm like, are you buying stuff? And they were like, yeah, we had lists. And I was like, oh. But Target has a lot of stuff on clearance. Well, listen, this was $200. So this is a dollar a friend paying, babe. A paying, because it's on clearance for a hundred. Yes, Caraway, what's Caraway?
It's a brand, a good brand.
Oh, is it? Well, you get you two pans for a hundred dollars.
I wanted that, but then I, you know.
And you can get two down here for a hundred and forty dollars. It ain't that good, I'll stick with my cast iron. Where'd the car you go? I keep losing y'all as I roam around this store looking like I don't really have a reason to be here. Let's go look in the kitchen section. While they actually buy the things they need. Oh, found her. The kitchen section. Oh, there's more. Oh, didn't you say something about a cutting board? They have clearance cutting boards down here.
Well, this one will replace the one that I had.
Yeah, they got clearance cutting boards. You wanna make sure it's the one that is on clearance. This is how I found my KitchenAid blender, which by the way, I forgot to tell y'all. When I went back, that KitchenAid blender was $119. I paid $199 and apparently they don't do the thing where, what's wrong? What? What are you laughing at? Yeah, someone was having fun in here. It's funny that you caught, you caught that because I did not. Yeah, I paid $199 for it, but it went on sale, like clearance even more. So at 70%, I think for $119, but I was still happy to get it for $199.
Because I'm trying to get something between bucks and you say like, oh, $100.
Yeah, absolutely. You are absolutely correct. Okay, while y'all grocery shop, I'm going to see what they got in the housing section for clearance. I'll be back. Cause the food section ain't giving clearance, huh?
Not the food section, they giving clearance.
They not? Yeah, after this, we going home. So I will see y'all. They, who said drink? Well, cause she was. I don't know why I keep singing that and doing this stupid move. Alright, y'all.
I don't lose things.
Hey y'all, we are out and about, my sister, or me, or my friend. We just had a working session at this cute little coffee shop called Whisk. It's in Richmond on Main Street. It is really cute. It was freezing in there, but I'm always cold, y'all know that. So we're about to go and get some lunch. Had a taco spot we've never been to before. And then I'm going home and do a little bit more work. I'm about to eat, y'all. It look good. So listen, I am freezing. The air conditioner is blowing directly at this table. I'm cold. But anyway, let me show y'all this taco. I'm waiting for some sour cream, but it look good. It's called the MVP. We're at Tequila, Tequila and tacos. So it is a MVP. It has, it has onions and green peppers, but I took them off. So I got chicken, shrimp, steak, and I put mushrooms on it. I love mushrooms. It's delicious. Very well seasoned. Delicious. Thank you. That's excellent. Hey y'all, alright, so from the beginning of this video, I have washed my hair. I have done my hair, I have taken a shower. I am at the grocery store because I need to get things to, uh, make protein shakes. I'm not a breakfast eater, right? And not being a breakfast eater is not a good thing. So what I wanna start doing is on the mornings where I just really cannot, don't want to eat breakfast, I'm going to make protein shakes. And so I'm at the grocery store, I'm gonna get some protein shakes. I did stop by Starbucks. I had some points and then I had, I had points from my credit card that was going to expire at the end of the year. So I got a Starbucks card with that too. I got a gas card with that and I got three days free. That's what we going next week when I was telling you I'm supposed to go out of town. Like first part of this video, this is the second hot half of that day. When y'all saw me earlier, I was like, just getting out of the bed. Like I was like, okay, I'll go work. But went ahead, got myself done up a little bit to go out in public. So we going to the grocery store. I kinda just wanna go out. I don't wanna spend no money, but I wanna go out and just kinda look around. I don't know if I'm gonna do that or not, because like I said earlier in this video, I got some content I need to record. But some of the stuff is in the dehydrator, so I gotta wait anyway until it's completely finished drying. But I have a cute little idea. But right now we're gonna go in this grocery store, get some. I think I just need almond milk, I need yogurt and I need granola. So listen, my nail finally came off. Last time I had my nails done, not this set, but the set before. And my nails are yellow like that because I cut up turmeric. I'm pretty sure it's the turmeric that keeps turning my hands color when I cut it. Anyway, oh, it had broke so terrible. So when she put it back, she just kinda glued my nail together because my nail had already detached from my skin from the way that it had broke. And then it finally came off and I was so glad. So y'all won't see any new nails until this nail completely grows out to, to the point that it's covering my skin and we could put a nail back on it. Cause we not finna turn this nail up this bad. It look terrible right now. Anywho, let's, let's go in this grocery store. At home, imagine I pulled up and realized I forgot to get some ice. That's tough. So we definitely gotta go back out. But I had the cold stuff. So I was like, we'll go home. Cause like I said, I kinda wanna go look around. Not really spending any money, but in case there's something I need that I find, I'm gonna go just kinda out and about and look around. But I came back to bring that. And so we'll get the ice, we'll get the ice on the way back. And so, we'll get the ice. We'll get the ice on the way back. I pulled up, I'm sitting in the driveway, and I was like, "You didn't get no ice." And I need ice for my protein shakes. I don't drink watered down or milky protein shakes. I just don't like it. I like to have it more, it's like a slushy. I'll show y'all when we get back and I make one. Although, let's just be clear, what time is it? I was about to look at my watch. My watch ain't never charged, y'all. It's literally never charged. I just waited to be wearing it. It's eleven ten. So we gonna go out for a little while and, and look around, just get out the house a little bit, so when, you know, I'm not working. So I don't get out as often as I would like to anymore. So that's what we gonna do. Okay, so we're at Marshalls, and I took that jacket off, because it warmed up out here. It was really cold earlier. But we're at Marshalls. Marshalls has become like a store I wanna go to over Target at this point. I'm gonna show y'all the table that I showed you in the video earlier, where I told you I was redoing my setup at home. So I'm gonna show you the table. It's really cute, and I like the way that it folds down. But we're just here looking to see what we can see. So now, I'm not gonna tell you that I could shop for clothes in here. It's just too much going on in here. But for like home goods, I could. But, okay, let me show you the table. So this is the table that I got, and y'all couldn't really tell. So it had these plugs in the back. Then it has a USB, USB-C, and then, watch this. I thought it was so cool. It folds out. So I have a small space that I put this table in, and when I wanna push it back to the wall, it'll fit up under the desk. And then, I just thought it was really cold. And then, I saw this yesterday, too, which was really cute, but I don't really need it. And this, too. I wanted it for down in the pantry area, but, you know, I didn't buy. It's cute, though. This is also where I got that cute little lamp from. I wanna get a cuter light bulb to go in mine at home, but it was twenty-four ninety-nine. And then, the desk was forty-eight. I'm pretty sure of that. Yeah, it's on clearance or whatever for forty-eight. They have a lot of cute stuff. Like, see the mirror? If I ever redo my house, like I say I'm gonna redo my house, I would come to Marshalls, because they have a lot of cute stuff. Uh, my daughter still is not up yet, and so that's why I'm out and about. I'm waiting for her to get up. But like, see, so many cute things. I think all of it is very cute and affordable. Like, I think it's, it's cute and affordable. So I have started like coming to Marshalls a little more. And so, they had one that didn't fold out. I wanted the fold-out one, because it gave you more space. But this one is just like it. It just doesn't fold out. It's just a basic table, which I still think is cute. They have lots of things in here, so don't sleep on Marshalls, because I was sleeping on Marshalls, y'all. But mostly because it's kinda cluttered, so I didn't wanna come in here, but yeah, you can find some cute stuff. I'd be surprised. The Christmas stuff is out. Like, I think all the Christmas stuff is so neat. I love Christmas. It is my favorite, favorite holiday. Like, look at this. It's so cute. They got Christmas stuff for days. Pretty. But like, they got all the Christmas stuff out now, which, love. I think these are very cute. I like these kinda trees. I think they real cute. Y'all count how many times I didn't say cute in this video. Anywho, yeah, Christmas is my favorite holiday, and I'm clearly, we all know, gonna do vlogness this year. Kinda the only everyday vlogging thing that I enjoy doing. But look at all of the Christmas stuff. Oh, look at that. That makes cute decor. How much are they? Fourteen ninety-nine. Not bad. Little more fanciness. Little glass in the reindeer. That's a little more color up here, but if you're doing like bland, kinda bland like me, those good additions. We're all, I think I have something like this already, but like, I could use something like that. And look at that. It's so fancy, but I like it. I'm gonna decorate very early for Christmas this year, probably like right after Thanksgiving, true story. Ooh, look how cute those are. How much is that? They're nineteen ninety-nine. Really cute. I don't wanna say cute no more. I do not wanna say cute no more. Real nice. It's kinda cluttered in here. When I, when I say clutter, there's a lot of people in here, in the spaces that I wanna be looking in. So we probably, oh, look, it's hand painted. Very nice. How much is that? Sixty-nine-nine, seven dollars for one glass. It's a no for me, but they're nice. Feel like I could do that myself. Maybe we'll do some crafts during, uh, vlogness this year. Maybe I'll try this. Oh my goodness, there was so many people in there. There was a lot of people. That must be where people come on Saturdays, babe, because, oh my goodness. It was a lot of people in there, and I can't wait for this hair to finish drying, so I could put it up in a bun. I don't wear my hair down there often. So yeah, come on dry, baby. Come on and dry, because we, because we got to get this in a bun and off my neck. All right, where to next? I kinda wanna go look around Target, mostly because Target has been having so much clearance stuff. And if it's something that I need, I will buy. By the way, just so y'all know, I am still enjoying this. Like, I am still one hundred percent enjoying, like, working for myself, essentially. I'm rambling. Let's go to Target. And so, I believe the clearance event is over, but the KitchenAid Pasta Attachment is on sale for one forty-nine. I'm not buying it, but it's on sale for one forty-nine. And then, the slicer shredder is on sale for forty-four. And the spiral peel core slice one is on sale for sixty-nine ninety-nine, so decent prices, I suppose. And then, the food grinder attachment was thirty-nine ninety-nine. They seem to be out of those. Definitely no clearance events going on. But we do have some good sales going on. Um, they have the white KitchenAid tilt head one for two seventy-nine, normally three twenty-nine. So, have a few. The other one is on sale for a hundred dollars off, three forty-nine. But I'm not looking for that, because I already have one. I found one for, um, clearance, one ninety-nine for a four hundred dollar one. What, a month or so ago, I guess? So not much clearance going on anymore. Not as much as there was. Anyway, there's still like the normal clearance out, but not as much as there was. As always, we're gonna go look at Joanna Gaines stuff. No, I, I do need plates. We use paper plates a lot, but, and I was buying these things, but they don't do well in the microwave at all. I mean, for fifty cent, though, that's what's up, but they don't do well in the microwave at all, so I'm not gonna buy any more of those. These are cute. They only have one, but these are cute. This one is, too. I could buy three of them, one for each one of us. Although, like I said, we use paper plates more than anything else, so probably don't need to buy none of them, which I'm not. I'm gonna roll up out from over here. Just like looking at pretty things. And I like going through the houseware stuff, which, you know. Oh, see, these are glass, though. Pretty sure, yeah, those are glass. But they have whole things for sixty. I don't think I care enough about that, but they're nice colors. Neutral colors. And we all know black is my favorite color, and they have black, too. See? Love it. Well, black is my favorite color to wear. It's not my favorite color. My favorite color is purple. Yeah, we might have to go get a, a basket for this, because all of their ball stuff is twenty percent off, which, you know, I do my cannon and stuff. Might have to think about that. So we're gonna look up on Amazon how much their cannon jars are before we make that decision. Definitely think this is a good deal. Yeah, I think it's a good price. The fall stuff is already like twenty percent off, so these started out at three dollars, and they're twenty percent off. Really cute. And they're, they're, um, I guess porcelain? Not porcelain. Can't think, ceramic, maybe? Yeah, nice. But they're twenty percent off. If you were looking for things, I think it ends on the twelfth. I think today is the twelfth. So by the time you see this, it won't matter. Oh, my shenanigans. I'm, I'm just out here, y'all. Joanna Gaines stuff is up here. And every, actually, everything is twenty-five percent off, but, uh, pretty sure it's still nothing I'm gonna buy, because it's already slightly pricey, if you ask me. That's just me. That's just me. Cute little baits. I think they're cute. How much is? I'm not gonna buy no bail. I don't need it, but, uh, the bail is six ninety-nine, y'all. Stop it. Stop it, I say. So I am gonna get some ball cannon jars. I've walked around the store a bit, and, um, I think that, yes, it's a good deal. And so, I'm going to get them again. I think, I think I call them quartz jars. They're pint jars. I'm definitely in need of pint jars. I do have quartz jars already. But if it's a good deal, I might get some more of those, too. We'll see. We did get, um, half pint and a pint. Happy with that. All right, so I think I've gotten my outside time that I need. I'm ready to go home. I'm going to go find some ice. I wish I could find the ice that's like already like super crushed, like the good ice. That's what they call it, the good ice. But I don't really know where they sell the good ice at, so I'm just gonna go get some ice. And then, we're gonna go home and I'll make my protein shake. Then I'm gonna get to work. I do imagine my children are still asleep, so I'm not gonna worry about when we will start my daughter's room. But we are gonna do it today. Whenever she wakes up and gets her stuff together, we're gonna start that show. Now, I'm gonna be going home. Let's see, I at the house. Okay, finally back into the swing of doing my protein shakes. I made a whole entire mess. But if y'all ain't new here, y'all know I do stuff like that. So I spent the morning with y'all. I gotta go do some work. I gotta go do some work now. Clean this mess up. We need to clean this house. Like, we really need to clean my house. We, we gonna do that. We might do that tomorrow or later on this evening, because I wasted powder on the floor last night. I mean, powder. I ain't waste no powder on the floor. I wasted flour on the floor last night. And now, I just wasted this on the floor. We need to clean up, so we probably gonna do that a little bit later. What I have left, I'm gonna put in the, um, refrigerator for tomorrow, freezer for tomorrow. But right now, I got that in my hair. I felt it. Right now, I'm about to go work.